Thank you everybody made it in. Good evening, welcome to the City Council special meeting for August 46th. I'm calling the meeting to hear what's first priority of Mayor Ford.
Yes.
Mayor President Teeter?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Madera?
President.
Mr. Mayor Frank?
President.
Mr. Mayor Douglas?
President.
Mr. Mayor Houston?
President.
Mr. Mayor Elliott?
Mr. Mayor Correia?
President.
Mr. Mayor Yelich?
President.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now, I know some of you weren't here the other night, but we have gotten to a point where we were at a four to four vote on two outstanding applicants to fill a vacancy. And we have the opportunity to vote one more time. But I ask the council that if this vote turns out the same way, we come up with an option, whether that be flipping a coin or going to another, another opportunity on how to make this decision. So with that, I would ask the city clerk to distribute some paper ballots.
Mr. Mayor, anything for microphones?
No microphones. I'll try to talk louder then.
That's not...
And I don't know...
That's for channel eight.
Thank you.
She's got a loud and clear in there. It's just not working again.
Thank you.
Kinda weird, that mic don't work.
Since there's no mic, you want to, uh, I'll make sure to relax when you sleep this off.
For the first round of ballots, Mr. Teeter was for Stephen Davis. Mayor Ford for Stephen Davis. Mr. Madera for Mr. Dukes. Frank for Mr. Davis. Douglas for Mr. Dukes. Mr. Huesman for Mr. Davis. Elliot for Mr. Dukes. Mr. Wardiola for Mr. Dukes. So Mayor Ford of the vote remains courtable.
And I expected that to be the case. I am open for a motion from the council on next steps. Because I don't think we're gonna get anywhere. Just, you're gonna have to get my attention. I don't know what's working up here and what's not. Mr. Douglas?
I would like to make a motion to have a special election.
I have a motion for Mr. Douglas to have a special election. That election can't take place until the earliest of late December. And would be a cost in the range of about $20,000. And there would not be a special election between the two candidates or applicants that are before us, anybody that lives within Ward Four that have the ability to petition on the ballot for that election. If there's a second and a confirmed vote. So I'm open for a second of a motion on the floor. Say none, motion fails for lack of a second. Open. Still open for another motion. Mr. Teeter?
This time if we have no other option, I would like to vote with the second.
I have a motion to flip a coin to decide who's going to fill this seat. Is there a second for that motion?
Second the motion to have a coin flip.
Motion is second to flip the coin to determine the results of the election. I need to ask for a roll call vote.
Mayor, mics are working.
Are they working?
Yes.
Oh, good. Well, I can see...
Mine on there, huh? Better. Sitting here screaming. Yeah, it's good. It's good.
The, the motion is carried, seven in favor, one opposed. So we will be flipping a coin this evening.
So Mayor Ford, I do have a quarter if that's acceptable. The question would be, who would flip the coin and how would you like to decide heads or tails? I would imagine alphabetically, makes sense for heads to go to Mr. Davis and tails for Mr. Dukes, if that's acceptable to council.
Well, why don't we bring both of the applicants up here to the podium?
Okay.
Please. I wanna be able to look at them when I talk to them anyway. I'm gonna be working with one of them. First, I wanna make sure you guys are both acceptable to this process.
Yes, I am.
Okay. And determining who gets heads, who gets tails, I don't have any care of how that works out. If you wanna go with what the city attorney suggested based on alphabetical order, who gets heads, who gets tails, that's fine with me too. But I wanna make sure you're both acceptable to that.
Yes, Mayor.
All right. So tell us again, whose heads, whose tails?
Mr. Davis would be heads. It's a, it's a quarter. Colorado mountains on the back. So Mr. Davis would be heads, Mr. Dukes would be the mountains.
All right.
Who would counsel like the clerk to say your attorney to flip the coin? The city clerk.
City clerk? Fine with me. And, and before you flip the coin, I have a few things I wanna say.
So you see that? Okay.
That I think are important, given the scenario that we're in. We're not in a situation where we're divided as a council. And I, I think we walked away from here the other night with some of our residents maybe concerned that we were divided as a council on a decision. We're not. This is a very tough decision. And I will tell you, there's no doubt in my mind that out of this entire council, there's nobody that won't be able to work side by side with either of these two men that are before us. We just happen to have two very good people to choose from, with two very diverse backgrounds that play a role in how these votes have turned out. And so, to be fair to both of you, I want you to know that regardless of who wins this coin toss, you will be supported by everyone on this council for the extent of your 16 months that you'll serve. And that's very important for me to make sure that our residents know that. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All righty. Mr. Douglas, do you have anything to say? Your lights lit up.
No.
All right. Well, let's get to it.
We'll just stay...
No, no practice. Just come up here.
Just do like a refereeing, just let it fall.
Let it just hit the ground and, and then we'll go from there.
It is heads.
Heads. Now, I, I want you all to know something. This is not making history in Commerce City. We have actually had to, during regular elections, we've had a deadlock on votes for the mayor's race. And the mayor was determined in the past by the flip of a coin. So, but, I, I will tell you this, I wanna make sure that you both stay engaged. So please, participate in this community. And it'd even be more beneficial if you guys figured out a way to be friends and work together. You're, you're both exceptional people and look forward to, to working with both of you at some point in time in my tenure. So, thank you and congratulations, but I would like to allow Mr. Dukes the microphone. If you have anything you'd like to say at this time.
Just thank you for this amazing opportunity to just be a part of this process. And one of the things I wanted to be a part of is to make sure civic engagement is active in, in Ward Four, making sure our citizens are active. And that would be my, so I appreciate it.
Well, and I would tell you, Mr. Dukes, I appreciate your background and I think you have a lot to offer for this community, especially in the realm of education. Me and you, a big part of why we had this little get-together out in the atrium, it's so that we all could learn a little bit more about you all. And we had a great talk about education and some of the needs that we have in our community for facing education. And we do have an education commission that two of our members serve on, on this council. I would love to see you engaged in bringing some of your expertise to help with the needs in this community for education. Thank you.
And Mayor Ford?
Yes.
Before the appointment is confirmed, the council does have to take a final vote.
And we're getting ready to do that.
Just wanna make sure you are aware of that.
We're getting ready to do that? Trust me. I know we gotta go through that. All right. But, Mr. Davis, did you have anything you wanna say before we get to the rest of business?
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yep, that's better.
Okay. Certainly I do. You know, I, I stand up here with some pretty amazing company in Mr. Duke. And through the last week, I've got to, to do some research on, on him and his accomplishments in, in the community and in life in general. And I feel honored to be able to, to be chosen in such company for him. I will never take this job, you know, I mean, this, this job is, is one of the most serious jobs I've, I've ever had. And I've been a chief of police. I know that serving the people of, of Commerce City is, is, is not an easy task, but it's a task that I look forward to. I'm impressed with the council before me and, and how you've, you've worked together in this. I understand that at least four up there had a different candidate in mind, but I, I have a lot of work to do to prove myself to all of you, but especially to four of you. And I look forward to that opportunity to do that. And I also thank everyone behind me that came to support both sides. That's amazing.
Great. I appreciate that. You're more than welcome to stay right where you're at because we're gonna get to some more business here and then you'll be up here. I am open for a motion. And a second to confirm the appointment of Mr. Davis. Councilwoman Frank?
I motion to confirm the appointment of Mr. Davis.
Councilmember Douglas?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to confirm council, Mr. Davis as the representative for Ward Four. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. And that's how it's supposed to work. All right. Mr. Davis, well, will you step right up here and we'll have the city clerk swear you in to the office of Councilmember Ward Four.
That's pretty loud.
We won't be able to cut it down. We won't be able to get it on camera.
Channel eight.
Sir, if you'll raise your right hand for me. And repeat after me. I, Stephen Davis...
I, Stephen Davis.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
The laws of the United States...
The laws of the United States...
And the state of Colorado...
And the state of Colorado...
The charter and the ordinances...
The charter and the ordinances...
Of the city of Commerce City...
Of the city of Commerce City...
And that I will faithfully perform...
And I will faithfully perform...
All of the duties...
All of the duties...
Pertaining to the office...
Pertaining to the office...
Of Councilmember Ward Four...
Of Councilmember Ward Four...
Of the city of Commerce City...
Of the city of Commerce City...
Colorado to the best of my ability...
Colorado to the best of my ability.
Let me be the first to congratulate you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. No, you can down here and sign this for me for just a moment. And then we can go up and get pictures. I'm gonna take pictures first.
Oh, that was my corner.
Did you go to this corner? Did you get that right? Yeah. Did you get it from the different...
You know, I'm honestly, I'm giving Mr. Davis...
I was nothing, this is a paper... Oh, I'm pretty busy. Well, I can get my... I think you better ask him for that corner. Oh, you guys... Yeah. Where do you want this?
One, two, three. One more. Thank you.
Before I end the meeting, I want to, again, personally thank Mr. Duke for his application and the other eight folks that were not appointed to this position. We need to have more people in the community step up and participate with their civic duties. This may not have been Mr. Duke's time, but he does have a baby on the way and a lovely little girl. And I want him to not give up. And we have an election coming up. There'll be five seats available in 2019 November. So keep the intent and the desire because you will make a great councilman. And we had 10 really good applicants. And this is one of the harder things that a council has to do, is deny nine people and, and have one that gets to take that seat. It's a terrible position to be in. I like my odds to be a little bit better than that. But things work out the way they do for a reason, and I'm a firm believer of that. I lost an election two years ago, running for county commissioner. And I chalk it up to, there's a higher power and there's a reason that, that things happen. And that hasn't discouraged me from giving back and, and continuing to pursue some of my dreams. So please, stay involved. I know it, it's not an easy thing to walk out of here and not be up in this seat. But it takes a bigger man to hold his head up and stay engaged. So thank you to all of the applicants and thank you to this council for being transparent and fair about how the process took place. And welcome aboard, Mr. Davis. I want to make sure you know, you didn't sign up for Monday nights. You signed up for...
I'm not that much of a football fan.
Yeah, well, Monday night football's out for sure, but you know, when we get into boards and commissions and everything else, the average person thinks that city council is a Monday night job, and it's not. It's a, it's an every day of your life, even when you're sleeping job. I've taken a lot of phone calls at two and three o'clock in the morning from upset residents. So it just doesn't end on Monday nights. And it, it takes a passion to do the job. And I think both of you had that ability to do that, and that's why it was a struggle deciding who was the right person. But anyway, congratulations. We look forward to serving with you. And I wanna thank everybody in the audience for showing up and supporting those folks that you love, that, that you know will do a good job. It, it shows us that we had two great candidates by having the turnout that we had tonight. And I think tonight, even though we knew the inevitable one was gonna... And I think tonight, even though we knew the inevitable, one was gonna be seated, one wasn't, that it still was the right thing to do, was to take this pause and take another night this week, and spend some time talking to these folks, so that we can have a little better understanding of who we're working with. And, and again, it, even after visiting, it's still a very tough decision. So, with that, I would ask the council if they have any comments they wanna make before we move on. Mr. Huesman, your lights on? No? Mr. Douglas, no?
Is there any, any council administrative business tonight?
Nope, not tonight, on a special meeting, we do not have any reports or, or council administrative business or anything like that. So, if there be no further business to come before the City Council of Commerce City on this special meeting of August 22nd, we are adjourned. Have a nice evening.